I would like to call our regular meeting the Action Board Commissioners in order today in honor of Commissioner Marshall Steen. And if we please stand for invitation, place the flag. Let us pray. Lord, we give thanks today for the opportunity to meet on behalf of our city. We come today also with a sense of loss and grief for the passing of our colleague and friend Marshall Steen. We pray for comfort and peace for Pat and their family today. Help us today to make wise and prudent decisions for our city and its people. We pray for blessing and favor to be upon this board of mayor and city commissioners, our city manager, department heads, our employees, and our citizens. Bless those in attendance and go with us throughout the day. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
File agenda. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like so. Motion received. File the minutes of the regular meeting, January 25, 2018.
Seven.
Second. Any discussion on those minutes? All favor? Aye. Oppose, like so. Under here's reports. I'll start by welcoming the Ashland Middle School 6th grade student council. And if you would, if you may want to address us from the student council. Stat?
I'll speak on behalf of them. We're thankful that you guys will have us today and we're really glad that these kids can sit in and see some firsthand government in their community. So, thank you.
Well, would you identify yourself for the minutes?
I'm Corey Brown. I'm a co-sponsor and our teacher at Ashland Middle School.
Anne?
Rebecca Williams.
I've hired Rebecca.
Thank you.
And brought her along and she is an outstanding employee, teacher, and all that. And was involved in your hiring too. I'm so proud of people like that. Well, we're glad you're here and I hope that you'll be proud of us when you leave and you have a city government to be proud of and people running. That you're all really good people up here. And we're representing you and your families every day. Every decision we make and it's significant and it's important. One of these days, you'll remember me telling you this, but the government closest to the people, the government closest to the people is the most effective government there is. We're really active in what we do, but we also feel quite elude from the Congress of the United States, the Senate, the House vote. We feel pretty much the same about Frankford. We were there yesterday and I'll elude that, but we're the people that make sure your water's running and yes, the sewage is going out, the garbage gets picked up, and the police protects you and the fire department take care of your property. In the process, we try to help every business in town, new ones and existing. Streets, roads, and sidewalks, and parks, and playgrounds, all the quality of life issues that will bring more people to our community and maybe help you all stay in our community when you finish all of your formal education. And the truth of it is, it's tough for everybody nowadays and some of you are probably from homes where you hear your parents talk sometimes about bills and keeping everything going, but the city's the same way. Except we have to do things based on all of your families in the best interest of them. So, I'm glad you're taking a leadership role at your school. It's very important. And some of you may very well be sitting up here someday and I hope you are. I hope I'm around to see it. Those hearts aren't really good, but that's okay. We live with that every day. I would like to put a statement out today and kind of on behalf of the mayor and commissioners, they are in agreement and I know they'll have some comments they would like to make also. We were in Frankford yesterday and some of us attended the Kentucky League of Cities, which I'm a member of the board of directors and it's made up of elected officials and some city managers throughout the state of Kentucky. They assist cities in many ways and at this time of the year, because the legislature's in session and there's some very significant important bills that will impact Ashland and they will impact their families. They certainly impact the entire city. And one of those just happens to be, has to do with a pension obligation for all government employees, from policemen and firemen to professors in college and anybody that's in a government position that's under the Kentucky Retirement Board. There's a bunch of schoolteachers are under that and county employees and so forth. And for many, many years, I don't know how many, Andrew can research it, but for many years, 50, maybe more, whatever, they use a term not only in Frankford and Washington about kicking the can down the road and making the pension plan solvent for everyone that's under it. It costs money every year. And for many, many years, our general assembly kicked the can down the road. They did not face it. They did not take it on. They did not raise revenues in some fashion to meet that obligation. So now, Ashland, Kentucky is one of the cities in the state of Kentucky. Counties are affected the same way. That are being asked by the Kentucky Retirement Board, they met, they determined amount of money that city, like Ashland in particular, would need to pay next year and every year subsequently to that until the pension fund is balanced. And I know you don't, you don't think in those terms and I understand that. I guess for those students who are here, I would want you to think there's a whole bigger picture to run the city government than just streets and roads and water and leasing and fire and so forth. But this pension fund for us has been reported to us from Frankford to be about $1.9 million. $1.9 million, as you know, is a whole lot of money and the city doesn't necessarily have that money. And we budget each year with taxes and fees and revenues from our utility department to make the city operate. There are a lot of, we're very solvent in the city of Ashland. We watch what we do. We're fiscally responsible. We're very prudent about expenditures and the things we do to enhance our community and make it continue to grow. Many cities are in deep trouble and I was in the League of Cities meeting and a lot of mayors have told me they won't have a police department, they won't have a fire department if their pension obligation is in fact what they've received. Well, we can handle it a little bit for a year. I'm not sure about two years, but things have to happen. Reductions have to come into place or you have to raise revenues too. And this commission, my fellow board of commissioners, all ran knowing that people throughout the community have been tied their belt for a long time. All of us in our homes, you have so much money coming in and you want to do this, you want to buy that, you want to go somewhere and sometimes you can't do it because the money's not there. Cities operate the same way. You know, there are certain infrastructures that you have to take care of to keep everybody safe. We have utility water and sewer treatment plants that have to be maintained and upgraded. It costs a lot of money to do that. We have employees that expect some kind of an increase each year, although there are years when it can't be done and benefits have to be kind of held at a standstill. But our people in our homes are doing the same thing. When we go to Frankford and find out yesterday that, basically talking to our area representatives, our senator and our members of the House of Representatives, that it really hasn't been discussed much yet in Frankford and we're into 20, 25 days? I think the legislature meets, y'all probably studied, 60 days a year and then it's just committee meetings after that. The number one bill that needs to be put into place and everybody be able to see what it is and to give input will be on this pension liability and no one even knows figures. We talked to the minority four leader Rocky Atkins, who is an adjacent to our district representative Kevin Sinat. Rocky, I've known him since he played high school basketball and I knew his dad who was the coach and he's outstanding legislator. He imparted some pretty good clarity for us yesterday in what should be done and very similar to what the League of Cities is talking about phasing some kind of payment in. You know, what's happening? When you kick the can down the road, it means now all of a sudden Retirement Board wants it solvent and subsidize to get solvent as quickly as possible. And I think cities and counties are expecting some kind of gradual payment, which we could handle in our budget over maybe more years than the next five or 10. I don't know, but no one's laid out a plan to do that. And the governor is pretty adamant that this, all be taken care of and I know he's got a great business background, but when you get to the government closest to you, the most effective government, because you can see us anywhere. You can call us on the phone. Your parents probably know some of us. You can look us in the eye and say, hey, what are you going to do about that? But we can't do that much in Frankford, certainly in Washington. And so, this is a significant obligation for our city. We didn't know any more when we came home yesterday than when we went and we were really hoping to maybe get a few answers. So, we're going to be monitoring very closely the activities in the legislature and our legislative leaders from our area know that it's going to be a major impact. They even made the comments, the biggest bill that they ever had. They don't have the bill yet, but it will be the biggest bill they've ever addressed. And...
And it's the one they know least about.
And it's the one they had the least information. So, I want to tell you that it will go into effect July 1 if the general assembly does nothing, which is wrong. The Constitution should be changed, the laws should be changed. No board that's not elected should be able to do that to you and the Kentucky Retirement Board are appointed by the governor. They're not elected by the people. When you're elected by you, at least you've got representation and they know you elected them. They answer to you. Retirement Board doesn't answer to anybody. But it should never work that way. Our understanding is that if the legislature just lets it lay and they don't want to address it because, Andrew, most of them don't want to address it. They don't want to deal with this problem. Our understanding is if they don't address it, it goes into effect, which is the same thing as if they adopted it in total. We're hoping they will do a phase end over each year, over so many years that we know how many years that we can make sure our revenues will meet that. We're set to get a $1.9 million additional bill to this city that nobody can prepare for that. We have to be fiscally responsible, prudent and proactive, as possible take actions to prepare for this added burden to our city and our citizens. My board of commissioners are in total agreement, our city manager's in agreement, that number one, I propose an immediate hiring freeze in the city of Ashland, only necessary positions based upon review by the city manager, the finance director, and board commissioners before any new employees. Number two, an immediate review of our current budget status, this year's budget, that is still good to June 30th, in each department and direct sustainable reductions in each department. Direct sustainable reduction in each department. Number three, review of all capital expenditure requests in each department that are in the budget today, essential for infrastructure needs for review by the city manager, the finance director, and board commissioners. Four, possible removal from the current budget. Number four, travel and train needs to be essential to maintain required certifications. We must address our spending in the city of Ashland, just like every resident in our city, every business in our city. Live within our means and it brings tough decisions, but ours must always be in the best interest of every citizen every day. And this board commissioners is willing to make those tough decisions. But we also are going to stand tall and make sure our residents understand that we're willing to make the tough decisions within the city first, just like all of us do in our homes. Do we really need to do this now? Can we pay for it? Should we do this now? Can we hold off? Do we need to employ all the openings we currently have? Can we make it without doing that? Can we see what impact, what the final analysis is going to be of what the pension obligation will? I've been in some office many years here in the city and this impending obligation is the biggest thing that I've ever seen and it's going to be very difficult to face for the city of Ashland, for Russell, for Flatwoods, for the county, our county, rural county. Our county is also going to be in peril from this. Everybody in the state of Kentucky. So, I wanted to get that statement out publicly so our people understand that's looming, possibly ahead for our city, for the city commission, and this mayor to deal with. And we're trying to be proactive to the maximum extent possible to try and address everything we can. We've got the second half of this budget year we're involved in now, so, and I think we begin our budget, individual budget meetings next week. City manager, he can address that. And in March, we'll start our group budget meetings as a commission to look at every line item, every department, what can we continue to provide for our citizens in a safe and efficient manner, in a cheaper manner, in a less costly manner, in order to make our bills balance with our revenues. Commissioners, I open up to any of you all, any comments you might have.
Well, I think by sharing your sentiments, it was very frustrating yesterday to go to Frankford and hear the lack of solutions offered, leadership there. I think it was indicative of this problem. It's caused by the legislature yet, and a promise by the legislature, but they're asking cities and counties to fulfill that promise for them. And unfortunately, they have no solutions to the crisis they created and now it could actually cripple cities and counties across the state. And that's, to me, shameful on their part. And it's hurting our city today because we have to make some adjustments so that we can live within our budget. And again, I share, and I also want to thank you all for coming along. We all together made it very clear to them that it's a priority for us and we can't send our laurels and let the state figure it out because they haven't and they're not going to unless we are there calling and you all calling, letting them know that we have to fix this, this will cripple our state and we're wasting money. Thank you, Commissioner.
I felt like that we were heard. I left somewhat encouraged. We met personally with Representative Sinat, Rocky Atkins. We saw Dan Bentley briefly and met personally with Senator Webb. And I felt like encouraged, a little encouraged when I left that we were heard and they know that are concerned. We sat in on some committee meetings, but I thought all in all, it was a good trip, one that we needed to do as a body.
We did. And you're right, I think our people heard us.
Yes. Secondly, I'd just like to welcome you girls. You're the best and the brightest today. And so, my only question is where's the boys? They're underrepresented.
You're the third one to ask that.
I asked first, asked if they didn't let boys on the 6th grade.
We're the tarf and I both asked them the same thing.
But welcomed today. I was telling, the mayor was talking about you may be up here one day also. I was mayor divorce student in the 8th grade at Putnam Junior High. That's when Putnam, back in the Stone Age, when it was 7th through 9th grade.
Wouldn't have all gone for that.
But I think he was 25 and I was 15.
22.
But I had him for history and here I sit. He's my mentor, my coach, but somebody asked if they pout. Let me tell you, the Board of Education was put to the seat of learning several times. This is my last comment with Ashland Motion is putting on an event Saturday, is that correct? Gravy Bowls? And I think you're going to talk about it, but the mayor and commissioners, they are needing some help. They are needing a generator for their event. This is a great event that will help our, most are downtown and I was just wanting to know if we can possibly, the city could possibly help them out with the loading of a generator.
Have a power problem over there?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm sure the manager can work with my man, Mr. Carpenter, there to help them out. Yeah, it won't be a problem.
That's all I have.
Thank you for the permission for bringing that up.
My turn. First, back to your proposal. We got off track just a little bit. Thank you for bringing this to the public's attention and making a point of saying this is what we think we need to do. I appreciate that. I wonder if we maybe need to make a formal motion to direct these things happen. And I know most of them are already happening and I commend the city manager, he's already doing these things. But just as a matter of procedure, if we should...
Rule through our minutes.
That we accept this proposal in terms of this budget issue that we're facing so that we can, we can put that on the books.
Do it? Can we do it now, some of you later? Do it now?
I'll make that motion, please.
Second. Any further discussion? Thank you all. I know where your hearts are and I felt like I was expressing for all of us and I appreciate that. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like so. Thank you.
Now, I have more comments. Moving right along. We've been a little bit busy since the last meeting and obviously, we opened this meeting in memory of Marshall Steen. I know that we all deeply feel that loss and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that and I appreciate that we opened the meeting in his memory. I'd also like to ask that we adjourn the meeting in his memory and also in the memory of Rick Richardson, just a stellar community volunteer whose service was last Friday. I ended up speaking at his service, basically just, I think what Rick challenged all of us to do, and I'm going to speak directly to our young ones here, I think what Rick challenged us to do more than anything was to give of ourselves. And I know for me personally, I took that to heart. I don't know if you all know anything about Rick, but Rick lived in a shelter, but he fed people in the community kitchen, he clothed people when he could, and I think he taught us all that we all have something that we can give and I want to strive to do that and I know that you guys do and I hope that you all take that to heart too. So, if you all don't mind, I'd like to adjourn in his memory as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. City manager?
Just following up on your comments, Mayor. Like Commissioner said, we have the four bullets that you have on here, we have pretty much enacted at this point for the public to know we do have right at 30 vacancies, which is about 10% of our authorized strength. So, just to a data point on that, we have taken reductions, if not filled positions up to this point, but we can absolutely follow this guidance. And also, as the mayor said, we'll be discussing different courses of action for the mayor and commissioners' consideration next week, which we'll then dovetail into budget discussions, as the mayor said, coming up in March. Other comments, Mayor?
No.
Okay. Two other things, performance recognition. I've been meaning to do this since December. I'm not recognizing a specific hero today, but literally since December, I've had this written on every note page of mine now. Forgot to mention the directors and department heads and special staff. Most of the people in the city know these folks by name and by face, but they do a fantastic job. Their level of dedication, their level of professionalism, their intelligence, everything about those folks sitting in the back of the room is just off the charts and I appreciate what you all do every single day. And I know a lot of it goes under the radar, but it does it to me and it does it to mayor and commissioners. So, thank you very much for what you do. The second thing I want to talk about is the How Can We Help version 2.0. I've been mentioning this for months. I thought we were going to get to a, we're going to get to the How Can We Help 2.0 a little bit quicker than we did, but as of this afternoon, How Can We Help version 2.0 is going to be up and running on the city's website. What that is, is that's a way for the citizens to reach out with specific issues that they would like addressed by the city. It's desktop and mobile friendly. It's 24/7. There's a map function on it that allows citizens to pinpoint a location or see if concern's already been identified, so you can get a visual graphic of that. Citizen's going to upload an image or take a picture with their device and upload it. Requests will go directly to the responsible city staff member. So, if you've got something with a pothole, for example, that will go directly to Randy Carpenter or his folks and they will be able to take immediate action on it or give you immediate feedback. When I say immediate, within a reasonable amount of time. Anything that's emergency, call 911. But the city staff will review that and they'll also provide updates. If there's not an answer, it will be escalated up to the department head within five days and if there's not an answer, it'll be escalated up to me within seven days. So, your requests and your concerns will be addressed and it's, I think it's a great way for the city to move forward. We really need to get feedback on it though. So, if there's something that you see as you implement it, you don't get feedback for some reason, we need to know about that. You can reach out on our Facebook page, contact Public Information Officer Joanna King. Her number's 606-327-2033. And so, we really want to improve this as a tool for the community. And Mayor, that's the last thing I had.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Well, I just want to kind of piggyback on the How Can We Help. The only other thing I would think we may want to focus on communication wise is I get a lot of folks that are not internet savvy reaching out to the commissioners in addition to. So, are we looking at any improvements to our phone system?
Yes, Commissioner. That's a great point. We specifically have challenges in billing section because we have antiquated phone system. We're looking at a collective improvement that is looking at this point to be cost neutral for our internet security, for our website management, and also for our phone system. So, we're looking at all as one package and we're taking bids on that right now to, for a presentation to the mayor and the commissioners. And for your specific question, with updated hardware, we will be able to put people in the queue. Conceptually, you're number eight in the queue, your wait time is approximately this amount of time if you want us to call back to your number.
So, that may, we may lose that lost in transition kind of complaint that we forget.
Yes, absolutely. And it's a real challenge. I mean, if you walk into the billing section, you'll see all those individuals on the phone most of the time, all the time. So, it's not, for those of you who've experienced that frustration, it's a real frustration that this is how we're trying to adapt to, but we need to update the software. And again, we've seen some inefficiencies on some things that we've done technologically in the city over the last couple X amount of period of time and we think that by reducing some things and adding new hardware, we'll be able to fix that. Your point though also on the How Can We Help, folks can call up that don't have internet access, they can call up and this can be manually inputted by Aaron or Patty and it'll be, it can be that quick also. So then, we can continue to keep that system going. And also, for everybody's identification, it allows me as a city manager to look and say, how many complaints are we getting? How are we responding to these or where are we meeting success? Where are we challenged?
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Mayor. At this point, our meeting's public participation and if you have a matter you'd like to bring before the board commissioners, we'd ask you to come up front, put your name and address and give us your comments in five minutes or less.
I'm Whitney Lowe with Ashland Motion. I just, I want to thank commissioners, mayor, for letting us use the generator for this weekend's event. We're really excited about the gravy bowl, which takes us on Saturday. And just to have some reassurance for the event, it's nice to have full backup electricity so we can keep all that gravy warm. So, we encourage the community to come out. The event's from 10 to 2 on Saturday. We have over 20 gravies that are being prepared. We have 14 local teams, live music, and a paper football tournament. So, we have a lot of fun activities and we look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday. Thank you again. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? We appreciate you being here, especially you guys, along with your here, along with your out of class. I know what that's like. We're glad to have you. Thank you for bringing it down. We appreciate it. Old business, Adam A.
First reading on January 25th, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor, executed amended agreement with State Harbor, RDS, Compliment Day. Subrecipient of 2017 program year community development block grant funds adopted by ordinance 58, series 17, change in contact information for the Department, Community, and Economic Bureau.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like so?
Aye.
Out of feet?
First reading on January 25th, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor, executed amended agreement with Hill Press Bruce Mission. director of mayor, executing amended agreement with Hill Press Bruce Mission, subrecipient two thousand seventeen program year community development block grant funds, is adopted the ordinance fifty-nine, series seventeen, changing contact information for Department of Community and Economic Development.
Second.
What's second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign.
Aye.
Second. Out of C.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor, executing amended agreement with Community Assistance Referral Service Center, Ares, subrecipient two thousand seventeen program year community development block grant funds, adopted the ordinance one oh four, series seventeen, changing contact information for Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign.
Aye.
Out of D.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor, executing amended agreement, Ashland Community Kitchen, and the subrecipient two thousand seventeen program year community development block grant funds, adopted the ordinance sixty-two, series seventeen, changing contact information for Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of E.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor, executing amended agreement, Shelter Pope, subrecipient two thousand seventeen program year community development block grant funds, is adopted the ordinance fifty-seven, series seventeen, changing contact information for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of M.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor, executing amended agreement with Boyd County Council on Aging In, Ashland Senior Center, the subrecipient two thousand seventeen program year community development block grant funds, is adopted the ordinance sixty-one, series seventeen, changing the contact information for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of G.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor, executing amended agreement with the Ashland Child Development Center, and the subrecipient two thousand seventeen program year community development block grant funds, adopted the ordinance sixty-three, series seventeen, changing the contact information for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of H.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor, executing pole attachment license agreement between the city and Kentucky's power company for the use of A utility poles purpose of hanging fiber for installation of a security system at the city of Ashland Water Storage Reservoir for the Department of Engineering Utilities, cost of two twenty-five per pole.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of M.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky accepting the proposal of GRW Engineering, providing water treatment plant, SCADA, and field instrumentation needs assessment in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars to the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of J.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing the reclassification of Section A voucher grants coordinator and adopting the revised job description.
He's reading K.
I'm reading K. I'm just putting some stuff together, sorry. So, this is K, and I'll go back to J. Adopting the revised job description for position in Department of Community and Economic Development.
Is that good, J?
No, he's just up a back.
Okay.
I'll go back to J.
I got you.
Amending the authorized positions to reflect said reclassification policies and procedures, compensation plan, reclassification plan, is adopted ordinance fifty-one, series seventeen, as previously amended.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign.
Out of J.
As first reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky, amending Section Two of ordinance one forty-two, series seven, which created a downtown residential parking zone within the city, transferring oversight of downtown residential parking to the Ashland Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of L.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky, amending ordinance ninety-nine, series ten, as previously amended by ordinance ninety-seven, series thirteen, regarding the rules and regulation, use of the Port of Ashland Riverfront Park within the city.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of M.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Morris Contract Again for all labor and materials for miscellaneous concrete and asphalt repair work for up to one year in the amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand forty dollars for the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of N.
First reading, January twenty-fifth, ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky, providing for the regulation, gathering, disposing, and destruction of garbage, rubbish, related waste materials, and fixing fees therefore, establishing the division of solid waste, establishing sure and water rates, cap fees, insulation charges, service charges, industrial pretreatment charges, penalties and interest, providing a penalty for the violation of the ordinance, repealing conflicting ordinances and all amendments thereto.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other old business? The reason we don't discuss those, you know, when you do these ordinances and you have, you don't say any discussion unless there's anything, we've already discussed them. You have to read the ordinances twice, two separate meetings for a final adoption. So, we've already talked about these, and so...
So, we may have additional questions.
Oh, yeah. We can have a discussion.
Yeah.
It's just the reason we weren't is because we already discussed these. And under new business, there might be some discussion items. We'll wait and see. Consent agenda.
Resolution, city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting and authorizing and approving course of action presented by the city manager on items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting, Board of City Commissioners, February eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Any discussion?
Just on consent agenda item one for the tennis court renovation project, I just like some clarification where we are.
This leaves, Commissioner, leaves forty-eight thousand remaining on the contract. Still have final leveling. If you walk by there, you'll see some leveling. When they do the final leveling on that and painting, that will all be taken care of. The forty-eight thousand definitely covers the remaining work. Got no issues with that. Estimated completion is fifteen April, because they've got to do that when the weather warms up.
So, we have no additional cost to approve before this morning?
No.
Okay. In our initial, just looking here, our initial contract was for a hundred eighty-six thousand six ninety-one. Final contract is two hundred and, almost two hundred forty thousand, is that correct?
This was due to the change order for the...
The change order.
Right. Yeah. Time stabilization. All right. Which the board approved a couple of times.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. New business out of May.
Ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number two between the city and Commonwealth Economics Partners LLC, which accepted the proposed downtown redevelopment project as it relates to both State Tax Increment Finance and Tourism Development Act, TDA, for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do. I may be confused and apologize. This is a change order requesting us to approve the cost, but I don't see the cost.
Any ordinance?
And what is that amount?
Thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, just wasn't in my, it wasn't in my notes. Okay. So, my question then, if it's thirty-two thousand, what is it? I see here, the project cost increased when the board commissioners agreed with the staff recommendations to apply for the state TIP grant rather than the TDA grant. I apologize. Could you clarify that?
So, the TDA, the TDA is a simpler process than the TIP, which required a lot more staff work, out of the consultant. When the board decided to go from TDA to TIP, that increased the workload on the Commonwealth Economics Partners, and that's the cost that you see on there. And this also, this is a closeout. We feel at this point, we can do the rest of the TIP coordination, and this closes everything out with Commonwealth Economics Partners. One of the side notes is that we're applying with Woodlands, they may agree to cover half of this cost.
Half of the thirty-two thousand?
Right.
Okay. So, if we agreed to this, and there's the costs that we've agreed to, or the changes we agreed to, the TIP costs more than the initial bid was ten thousand, is that correct? So, our initial thought was it was going to cost twenty-five thousand to, to do the TIP package, and now it's twenty-five thousand plus thirty-two thousand?
That, that was the change that went from the TDA to the TIP.
Did anybody give this board any indication that there would be a doubling of cost for that? I don't remember cost ever being discussed when we were asked to do it.
That I don't know.
I think we discussed the process that it was going to be, the underwriting for the state TIP was a lot more involved than the TDA grant, like three pages.
Do, do we competitively bid this out to anybody?
I, you know, I would have to go back and look at how we, how we collected Commonwealth Economics.
I don't remember it ever, I don't remember that.
Yeah. I have to go back and check on that.
Okay. Well, I'm hesitant on approving this payment until I kind of further understand why it's almost double the cost. I get the idea that there was, I just want, I don't, I don't know that I've seen the work to approve it.
Sure. The underwriting for the state TIP program is volumes. We're talking hundreds, if not a thousand pages of data that had to be collected, tax data that had to be collected, that had to be presented to the state in order to get our preapproval for our TIP program, where the TDA grant is really just a narrative with some projections, but not nearly as much rigorous accounting work on the back end to come up with that application. So, when we elected to go, which is, which when we looked at the two possible outcomes of vote, once we realized that we really did fit with the TDA, and that the increase that we received, that we did, we're talking about well over about a billion five with a successful state TIP application as opposed to the TDA application, it seemed like it was worthwhile, so we made the recommendations accordingly forward.
So, can we expect any other charges?
Mayor, this closes out the whole project with Commonwealth Economics.
And how, how much time was for the additional change or approval? How much time was sent? Like, I thought we were done with them completely a while back.
No, no. We, in fact, they...
We made the initial payment.
No, they were, they represented us during the state TIP application process, and they were involved with all of our research along the way. They had several meetings with the state, they had several on sites here to do their research. So, it was, it was a pretty involved process.
How many months?
Probably another five months, sort of.
So, we're looking about what a month?
I think the consultancy is sixty-five hundred a month.
I didn't even know we were on a month-to-month with them. Is that what it is?
Yeah, that was the original contract they...
Okay. I thought it was like a flat payment. That's why I was asking if they did, if we actually bid out the services for the TIP.
When we, I'll say, when we did the original contract, we probably didn't structure it the right way. We should have done a more open-ended contract. We were trying to do a closed-end contract.
That's what I thought. That's because it was presented to us as twenty-five thousand, and this is what you gave.
And then what happened is, when we decided to go with the state TIP, we realized that we're going to have to do every month an amendment to the contract, which is two, which is going to take two readings of payment. The contractor agreed, let's just settle up at the end of it, once they got all the data collected. In November, we weren't sure if we were going to use it anymore, so we froze the contract, and we informed them about...
So, we're, so the payment we're approving today was...
Closes out.
Closes out from November. There's been no billing from December, January, or February.
There's been no, right, there's been no work since then.
And they haven't billed us?
We put them on hold, they replied with bad. They wanted to make sure we knew.
So, this, this, this closes it out?
Closes out.
Okay. I still would like to see the work performed, since it's doubled up.
Yeah.
Because I feel like I haven't seen that for somebody.
You copy all that to us?
You, you have seen it, but I would say, I appreciate it.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of B.
Ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing, directing the mayor, executing agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, the city for Enclosurement Permit, Protective Traffic Signal, Mast arm at the intersection Winchester Avenue, US twenty-three, and Twelfth Street, US sixty, for the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this part of the streetscape?
Yes, Commissioner. It is. It's a, we hope it's a final step with KYTC. It's been very bureaucratic. I'm not saying that totally majoritatively, but it's been very bureaucratic with KYTC. This allows us to put those mast arms up and to move forward with the Twelfth Street, Thirteenth Street landscape.
I think that would be great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of C.
Ordinance city of Ashland, Kentucky, accepting the proposal of the N Engineering LLC to perform engineering and drafting services associated with renovation Jet Plaza in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred dollars for the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
So moved.
Second. I know it will come to a later point, but I hope it will be proposed and made for once we complete the new park.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
the amount of $31,700 for the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
I know it will come at a later point, but I hope it will be proposed and be made for it once we complete the new park. Thank you.
It's all in favor.
Glad you're on the same page, but I think it's going to be worthy of a historical name.
I think so too, I'm excited about this project, I hope that we're able to secure funding.
I think if it was, if it was, yeah, it would work.
All favor?
Aye.
Close, like side. Be great for our community to get this done. Out of D.
Ordinance city of Ashland Kentucky adopting the revised job description for pump station technician, Department of Engineering Utilities, Division Water Distribution, Policies and Procedures Compensation Classification Plan is adopted the ordinance 51 series 17 as previously amended.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like side.
The mayor asks for your concurrence on the following appointments, Willie McCullough, 73, 29 High Point Court, to the Ashland Cemetery Board, four-year term that will expire September 17, 2021, Cindy Blatton, 15, 17, 29th Street, to the Cemetery Board, same term to September 17, 2021, to the Park Board, John Webb, 26, 55 Virginia Avenue, term that will expire October 18, 2019.
Do we tip?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like side. Thank you all very much. Discussion out of May, I guess.
We have two side of views.
Okay.
One is the Kingway Church, request 12 by eight foot, eight foot high directional freestanding sign at US 23 and 168 between the entrance to Providence Hill Apartment and King's Way Church.
Just looking at the notes in this, there weren't any issues where there in terms of police...
Mr. Pope, you have anything you need to address at all?
How would you deal to Osay Elmones? Yeah, okay. You know, any questions?
Do you have any issues with this?
Are there any issues with this sign? I've read through the notes, but I didn't see...
It's clear to your office review where it's not going to be obstruction.
No, no, there isn't any problem.
Okay, that's my main question.
While you're up here, how about out of, same thing?
Yes.
Okay.
They, Steak and Shake, they are complaining that it is difficult for, you know, customers to see them from US 23, so they want to raise it a little bit. I don't know whether that will work, but...
When did you all get this application with Steak and Shake?
We have a motion.
Oh yeah, we better get that before we get to...
I like the motion, I hope that one, I hope that one, let's go to, to eye on the...
King's Way.
Or the eight on the King's Way. You have a motion?
Yes.
A motion. Second, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Now, out of, aye.
Based on the notes that came in on the 5th of December.
Okay, because I have been contacted by Representative Steak and Shake.
They contacted me too, and I said, "You love the paperwork," and they haven't done it.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm asking, because I want to make sure...
Yeah, the issue, I guess, had to do with the confusion between them and the signed contractor.
Uh huh.
So they asked about it that time, but they did not submit the application formally, and so as soon as they brought it in, we passed it.
And both of these also require state KYTC staffing, correct?
Yes, but state mostly looks at billboards, so we just have to treat it locally and then inform them.
But, yeah, they have to be informed.
Right.
I'm just only making it one as part of the staffing process.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But, Mr. Pope, the state only looking at billboards is a real pain to me, because they don't look at it the same way I look at them.
What are some of the issues with billboards?
I like them. They clutter up the town, they, they're pure clutter, and if you see some of them, we don't have any, we can't do anything with it on a state highway, that's hard for me to understand, Council Martin.
But...
No research on it. The 13th Street coming in, once it's in our city limits, we should have a party in that.
But the state, I guess there are some other groups there for billboards, and they lobby the state, and they are very strong, so we, the local, we have to kind of accept what the state is saying, rather than make it more restrictive.
I get that, the only thing I think I would recommend is if something like that's being corrected, that this board be notified in advance, because we all got phone calls after it fills up.
I mean, nobody...
Are you talking of the one that came up?
You name it.
Yeah, the most recent one, yeah.
It was, it was processed so many years ago, so, and it was approved.
I mean, if you get a building permit for a billboard, it'd be great for us to be aware of it.
Oh, the building permit.
Yeah, because that means things are going to happen, right?
Do, Mr. Pope, do we get a, do we get a permanent request, for instance, on this last recent one that's going to go up, did we, did we get a request or just...
No, we don't, I don't think we issued a payment request to commissioners.
No, I mean, but just...
But did you all get one? On the...
No, in actual fact, the applicant, the permit, the final permit was the approval of the sign appeal, where the billboard itself was not something that is separate for smaller signs. For smaller signs, you don't have to get a building permit for it, but for billboards, you have to get a separate engineering drawing and all of that as a separate application, and he did not do that, so that was the issue.
Yeah, he didn't do it, but the state approves it anyway.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Right.
Yeah, it met their total square footage standards per side.
Again, the government, closest to the people. Mr. Pope.
Mayor, we are, we're preparing some ordinance amendments for our planning commission to consider, and, I'm sorry, our board's own adjustments to consider on how we would address billboards going forward first up. So we'll get that to you since we have a...
I think we can't do anything about it, the state needs to know how it looks in small-town America for people just come in and be able to rent anywhere they want, and it's horrible doing that 13th Street now, it's...
We understand, we've heard, and we're going to try to suggest some amendments that could alleviate some of the standing vote.
Well, I'd like to go out and visit Steak and Shake, so I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Glad it passed out of your free coupons today, probably wouldn't fly very well. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like side. Okay, any other new business? Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. At this point in our meeting, we will go into executive session to discuss potential litigation. There are only a few things that we can talk about behind closed doors. Personnel, which you wouldn't want us to talk about you or anybody related to you or anything like that. School system, school board the same way. We don't talk about potential litigation, meaning we may be in a lawsuit somewhere along the line over an issue, so we don't discuss that. Or pending litigation, is there anything else, Council Martin, not covered?
Probably yes.
Property acquisition, if we have an opportunity to acquire a piece of property, we can't discuss that openly because it may change the value of property. So we do that behind closed doors, but we also do not act back there. We do not take any vote, it's illegal. So we go back there and discuss these issues that are today, only potential litigation, that's all we're going to talk about, and we will not come back out, well, sometimes we come back out, talk about the issue of vote board, but maybe today, I don't know, but for sure, but we do not go back there, it's just behind closed doors. So people usually leave now, I don't know how long we'll be back there, is what I'm saying, that's the main bottom line, I don't know how long it's going to take, but some people leave at this point, because when we come back out, we're not going to talk about anything new and surprising or anything, we may vote on something when we come back, I'm not sure. But we appreciate y'all being here, staff for bringing them, and come back again sometime.
I'm going to take my shot, go into executive session, please.
Second.
Tell all the kids how exciting it was to be here today. We'll let the record reflect that we returned to executive session at 118, only potential litigation to discuss and no actions taken.
Need a motion recess till morning for further discussion of potential litigation.
Second. We'll recess till one morning, 10:00 AM to have further discussion of potential litigation. We're in recess.